Let's get started, Pat. Stand for the plat.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to add to the agenda, Pat?
Yes, Chair. So you have some documents relating to Spring Creek Township Road Agreement that was forwarded to you via email. You've got those documents before you. And then as part of the County Administrator Report, two items, again, documents that would, that have been given to each of you on the ECPN Grant Application for Sunnyside Care Center. We could do that as part of the County Administrator Report if you're comfortable with that. And then in, and then finally, we want to have some discussion on environmental costs relating to the highway building sale. And we can also make that part of the County Administrator Report if you deem appropriate.
Building sale? Okay, anything else?
No, that is it, sir.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ben?
I got it.
Motion by John. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this Spring Creek Road Agreement, I don't think I got that by email. I see it's sitting here on my desk.
Yeah, I received it late yesterday, and I'm convinced I forwarded it to the whole board, but I did make copies before you. I got it late yesterday.
I think I had something yesterday.
You didn't. Okay, yeah, it was, when I got it, I sent it to you, but so I'm.
He left me out of that.
Yeah, and I, that was not intentional. I have a Commissioner email that goes to all, all five, but.
Or, you know, I read the two letters, didn't see the road agreement was in there.
Thank you for that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Hearing non-motion carry. Minutes, November first. Anyone?
I just, under the assessor, it was listed as appraiser.
Yeah, I saw that.
Then I had a selling as-is for the Sheriff's Office. I had a comment after as-is, but.
Did you get that? Amanda, the assessor, instead of appraiser. Okay. Barry?
Under the Sheriff's, I believe that the motion seconded is filed with any and also with preference to government, other government agencies. Number two.
Yeah.
Either one, yeah, works.
Rescue would limit it quite a bit. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean government.
That's fine. Anything else, Barry?
No.
John? The only thing other I, than that was on page two, under the Auditor Treasurers, number three, motion to approve resolution 1122-1B, tax forfeited easement. I'd like you to put private, non-exclusive easement in this.
I think it would say that in the resolution.
It would, but if somebody reads them, it's tax forfeited easement is pretty vague. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Ben?
Yep.
Motion by Ben? Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor, speaking in the side, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Hearing non-motion carry. Open forum. Nobody?
Well, and if I could, Chair, there may be someone online that want to do open forums, so could we make that request?
Anybody online?
Yes, good morning. This is Jamie Kona Backy. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. We spoke yesterday. This is Pat Omen, County Administrator. We spoke yesterday, and you're live and online, and people can hear you. The documents that you provided have been given to the Commissioners, and, and I'll leave it up to the Chair on your timeline to speak. But Chair, how many minutes do they have?
A couple minutes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Kona Backy, and I am Environmental Council here on behalf of the White Earth Band of Minnesota Chipotle Indians. I'm appearing today to request that the County Board suspend a decision on the Zern Seablot amended cup that's on the agenda and hold a public hearing as permitted and required pursuant to the zoning ordinance, Chapter Eight, Section 11E. As the White Earth Band has made clear in three previous written submissions to county officials, a cup really should not be issued for the proposed Zern Seablot land use because it will absolutely cause permanent irreparable harm to surrounding tribal land and water resources on the reservation. Approval of the amended cup you are considering today would be a violation of the county's own ordinance, Chapter Eight, Section 11S, subsection one, which was, which does not, excuse me, allow conditional uses if they will harm the use and enjoyment of surrounding property. Moreover, approval of the amended cup would also violate clear United States Supreme Court law, which gives the White Earth Band jurisdiction over harmful land uses with the potential to harm tribal welfare, tribal resources, and the economic security of the band. To date, the project proposers had offered, have offered conjectures, but absolutely no evidence that their proposed Seablot land use will not harm tribal health, property values, and land and water resources. The Seablot proposes to spread manure from 3,000 hogs, roughly equivalent to the same amount of manure of tens of thousands of people, in an area on the reservation where surface water bodies are already impaired with E. coli from animal manure. In addition, the Seablot proposes to pump more than 1 million gallons of water per year in an area where the DNR has already noted concerns for surrounding calcareous spens and noted limited available information regarding the underlying aquifers and connectivity to surface water bodies. At three previous county meetings, there's been limited findings supported by no evidence in the record. I'm here today to, to offer my opinion that failure to take a hard look at the significant impacts that the tribe has repeatedly raised that are going to stem from the Zern Seablot render previous decisions arbitrary and capricious and, in our opinion, subject to reversal. It's my hope that rather than proceeding to the Board of Adjustments and then on to state or federal court, that the County Commissioners, the County Board, would respectfully suspend a decision today on approval of the cup and instead hold a public hearing so that we can once and for all consider the significant impact from this project. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ma'am, you are aware that the CUP has already been approved?
There was a previously approved CUP. It's my understanding that there was an informal amendment process taking out the previously stipulated to road agreement conditions. Under pretty clear state law, amendment requires that the previously issued cup be invalidated and that a new cup be issued. So it is my legal opinion and, and the opinion of the band that you are here today to consider a newly reissued because it's been amended CUP.
Okay, thank you for your, your thoughts. Any, anybody have any questions for? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else online wishing to speak? Came in late? Did you want to speak on open forum, or?
I, I had a question as of, is, where, is, I'm encouraging you as Commissioners to follow through and getting your ability to.
Dwayne, Dwayne Erickson, who's speaking.
Well, and, and one, and I was going to make this part of my report, but I'll, I'll review it now. So we have been in communication with Brent Arnie on the process and procedures for some time now. We have now collected all the data to actually put together a resolution to, to, to start the process of, of reviewing the opportunity of, of an appointment. I think the Board heard previously, there was, we did have an appointment in the past, and we lost that some years ago, and now we're, we're asking to bring that back. So we have all the data now that would be part of the resolution, just received the last component of it just a week ago. And so we will be crafting a, a resolution and bringing it to the Board. The one question I had, because there was some discussion from the Board, is in the past, when, when we looked at this, we reached out and to all the counties, and there was some discussion that we've already done that. And what I want to hear from Mr. Brent Arnie is, do we have to do that step? And he has not responded to me that yet, to, to me on that yet. But we have all the data now to complete the actual resolution that had been done by previous government units. That's taken some time, but we finally got that data. And as I was going to report to the Board during my administrative report, we plan on bringing that resolution at, at the next Board meeting.
What better month is it than to have that hearing? If my term is up in April. So I guess there's some time here, but I'm encouraging you, but if the County Commissioners don't think it's a good.
Thank you. All right, reports and correspondence. And I'm first, and I think this is the very first. I did not have a meeting between, between the last Board meeting and this meeting. I can't hardly believe it, but that's, that's the case. But I do have something to report. Shirley Savanco called me yesterday, Savanto, I'm sorry, Savato, called me yesterday and let me know that Clarence, he wanted to make sure Barry knew about it, that Clarence was in, November 8th was admitted to the Veterans Nursing Home in Fergus Falls, and that he's been having some issues, but he's, he's okay, but he just can't function at home anymore. So he wanted to make sure I let Barry know, because Barry always got a kick out of Clarence coming to the open forum and speaking. I don't know.
I had asked about him from you.
Okay, okay. You probably don't know that yet, but he used to, old gentleman.
I used to have us where.
Yeah, yeah.
He has had lots of ideas, you know, and some of them sounded kind of far-fetched, but they had some, they had merit, too.
Yeah, merit, sure.
I mean, I kind of agree with the one he said stop signs should be banned and just yield signs.
I was thinking about that driving goodness for you, that stop sign. I remember that one as the.
And you do know that stop signs in rural counties, if they're white around the outside, they're optional.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Isn't that correct, Mr. Glender?
Okay, Richard.
Nothing.
Ben?
I had a few meetings. On the second Transit Met, and our ridership data is very strong. We were up 19.85% over last year in September and 18.83 in October. We're doing fine financially. We have had a few applicants for bus driving, but the one who showed the most interest doesn't have a CDL. Kevin's going to wait until January to engage with the state on the appraisal that we got. He wanted to talk with the accountants about moving last year's net income into our reserve fund, and he's thinking about starting 2023 with no Saturday route, because the people showing up, typically, they know the people, and they don't have a reason they couldn't get rides any other day of the week to shop. We gave free rides to the polls and to the courthouse to vote early. We started that like four or five days before the election. We talked with Kevin a little bit about whether we would have to offer full-time if our ridership continues to remain elevated. He's, he's going to monitor it and said with the detours around town gone, it'll help make up some time and miles, but.
One thing we should note for, you know, like transit rides for elections is, especially those townships that are mail-in ballots now, and some people forget or lose their mail-in ballot, then they have to come to the courthouse. So those rural counties, we should probably put a plug in, you know, or those rural townships that go to, especially the first year, if there's any more, throw out a plug in, you know, maybe send out flyers to that town of saying, you know, remember the, the, you are mail-in ballots. If you lost it or forgot, and you need a ride, call Transit for a ride to get, get in to vote, because then they have to come to the courthouse.
Yeah, I think we should keep, keep doing that. On the third Museum Building Committee met, and five minutes prior to the meeting, the elevator inspection was completed and passed, and Becky was able to get a set of keys to the building to start occupancy. The building inspector checked off things on his list that I've reported on. They, you know, clear exits, they had grading up to the steps, the fire suppression system, and the elevator were working, and a few other things. They had a busy week. Ace finished pulling all their wires on the first floor, and we'll move to the second floor. Second floor access for a lift was closed off. So you just, you know, we got the elevator and the stairs up there. There was a little hole kind of next to a window during the regular construction. Mission Mechanical was venting the boilers and piping refrigeration and heating. Hogue completed some grading on the west side of the building, and as you can see, the building's down now. And still there had the second floor ready to paint. Tyler was going to start the following week. Thresholds into the theater were poured, and I think all the concrete work is completely done now, and the building's down. I got a call from Becky yesterday. She had some crews lined up that they were going to pay for to help move some of their stuff out of the airport building into the basement. And they, they're like, they're too busy, or they're not showing up. So she called Fargo Places. She can't really get, she can't really hire workers to help move, so she was wondering if sentence to serve would be able to help. And I didn't really know how that program was right now.
I don't know either. How's the sentence serve crew?
Immediately. She called Steve. I suggested she called, you know, Steve and just see what, what his thoughts were, but she didn't get a return call from him, so that I'd mention it to you guys.
I'll check into it.
Appreciate that. Okay, and then on the eighth Human Services Met, approved the office support position, Medica, SNBC contracts up for case management. This is because they were not an SNBC provider last year, as well as the Ucare Volunteer Driver Program changed from going from five to 5.4. And mileage went from 1.3 to 1.4. I actually think I may have typed that in here on. But anyway, we got an improvement in rates from Ucare. We're currently negotiating the Ucare SNBC Case Management Contract. We also discussed the $40,000 pledge to the dental clinic, which came out of reserves that we had set aside for something of a project of this type. We also applied to expand day services from productive alternatives, which would be another option besides DAC that's before us, and discussed MICV ARPA purchase to Central Market. You'll see that there. And, let's see. So that's all going to be on here. And then we, we also discussed the telecommuting policy and the flexible schedule policy. And I, I think, what I think we should do is make that telecommuting, you know, even if people are still going to come in, make them have, come in every, so many days, every two weeks, or so many days every month, rather than so many days every week. I just think there's some inefficiencies with moving people in and out of the building every single week. And then, Pat, you know, you were there. We discussed whether we even needed to have the flex policy or not, you know.
I just had a meeting, thank you, Commissioner. I just had a meeting with Denise, the one-on-one meeting Denise is here. And yesterday, we were discussing that at length, and we do think if there were some revisions to the personnel policy, that could be just removed completely.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, John?
Ben reported Transit, Museum Building. Had a couple of public works. Building was very, that's going very well. Pretty much all the main doors are in. They've got like good heat in there for us to walk around and things. Probably even started while they're taping and doing that in the office area. And things are moving right along. All hand.
So, yeah. Barry?
Public Works Facility, just to expand on that, there's still some pouring in some flat area in, in the mechanic's bays yet. That's the only pouring, but now that we have heat, they can do that this, you know, anytime. There's no, no major pickups. Everything's, every major thing's on schedule. John said all the exterior doors are in. The one exterior door, they're boarding up, and they're leaving it up above, and then they're putting a small one in for, you know, just like pickup traffic and small traffic, because you don't need the big door. So that one usually get, tends to be scuffed up, you know, when they have so much travel. So they're going to keep that out of the way and just use a small door, which, which sounds very, very good, that we don't have a bad door. It's really coming along right on schedule. They've really, I mean, for the shortage of concrete, we've really got lucky on how, that we, well, not lucky. I think our Highway Department had some, some help keeping that moving in the right timeliness, so.
I would tell you that the contractor informed me that good contractors get their concrete on time.
I don't, I don't know if there's, if it's not there, it's not.
We know who the contractor is, so you can take that.
Another thing they had, like Barry was talking about, we kind of had Brian from Soil and Water, and then we kind of decided on trees and go forward to some of that.
We're going to quote out the landscaping with McGuff, but we're going to use trees from Soil and Water that they've, that they'll, that they'll get for their price. And then they might be a little bit smaller than, you know, but they're reasonably priced. The total tree package, I mean, there was a few trees missing, but should be under 20,000. I mean, which is, for how many trees, the size of trees is, is a pretty good.
Proppanted.
Pretty good, you know, pretty good savings, so.
Hey, Barry?
Yep.
Thank you. Appointments. We have a Cormett-Watershed District appointment coming up.
Yeah, we did receive that, and we have, we have advertised it. The advertising has begun, so once the advertising's complete, we'll be bringing candidates back to the Board.
Any other appointment?
No, but we should have Kyle update us on any open appointments for any Commissioner, because we tend to, that tends to be forgotten at times. So, I mean, we know it, then it, then it, then we forget. So I think I might have one on planning and zoning, actually, that I forgot.
I still have one in Planning Commission from District Three. Still working on it.
All right, County Administrator?
Yes, so I'm, I'm pleased to say we have set schedules up for all the bargaining units for negotiation that'll begin here in November. And so we're very excited to negotiate with the bargaining units. And like, just to remind the Board, we did a one-year contract this last year. And of course, we'd, we'd be moving to forward with each one of them individually. A little bit of a difference, we are negotiating with them each individually. There, there was an example of a couple bargaining units together that negotiated with us. We are setting up time separately with each bargaining unit, so that's a little bit unique. We're going to have a call session meeting later today, so there'll be a little bit more discussion about strategy later today. The, the Employee Recognition Event, the Board gave us the opportunity to do some research about doing a recognition event at the end of the year. We're still kind of working out some logistics relating to some of the things that we would have there. We definitely want certificates. We've got individual employees that are well into their 40th year here, so we'd like to recognize them here at the end of the year. As far as location, and we're thinking some kind of food or meal. We're still researching that. It was brought to my attention that there might be some other opportunities, so we're just kind of exploring that. My goal would be to bring something to you perhaps on the 29th. But at a minimum, we would like to do certificates and recognize people for years of service for the Board. Budget work, we're, I won't go to that, because we have budget on there. Maybe, maybe more of a budget timeline. I, I am interested in hearing some feedback from the Board. There was some discussion about having a finance committee meeting on the 29th, but also that I heard some discussion about making that a board meeting, too, or a special board meeting. I'm interested in getting some feedback from the Board when we get to budget and what that meeting will be. Certainly, if three people, three Commissioners attend, we'll make it a board meeting. We'll post it as such, but it would be a special board meeting. It would be defined to specific, you don't do a lot of special board meetings, but we'd have to post it three days prior, and the specific agenda items are what we focus on. We can't add agenda items and things like that. So I'd like some feedback from the Board on whether they like that, to make that a finance committee or a board meeting. I'm just interested in getting some feedback, and we can get there when we get to the 2023 budget. And then, it already discussed the Watershed District. I think that's all I have right now.
Did you want to do Sunnyside?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, so there, I did forward this to the two Commissioners that sit on the Board. I got this yesterday from Ashley McNally. It sounds like every year, there's a request for an ECPN grant. That's an equitable cost-sharing publicly-owned nursing facilities grant. I'm not seeing a request for changes from the previous year, but I know you've got a real short time to look at this. And the reason we brought it to you in this way is when we received it yesterday, she indicated they needed to submit this by December 7th. And so we really may not actually have another way to take action except for today. And so curious to know if the Board is interested in authorizing that yet.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that Becker County participates in the ECPN for 2023 for $15,501.5.
All right, I have a motion by Ben, second by Barry. Any discussion?
If that amount is, that's what I'm seeing on this letter. If that amount changes, my motion includes that.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Fine, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Hearing non-motion carry. About the highway building?
Yeah, and I think both Dave and, and Jim are here, so you guys want to come up, gentlemen? And we have a tentative closing here for this, later this morning, but we're going to delay that because some new information got brought to us by the purchaser about a request that they have on some environmental costs. And I'm, I'm going to let Jim start with that. It wasn't in our purchase agreement, so that's why we're bringing it to you now. So, Jim?
Thank you. Just agreement. Do have obligations. Maybe do that. Obviously, he. The bank wants those paid by the. Perpetual that way with the.
Are those, can we use those for, for passing the states, you know?
I really doubt it. It'll remove tanks through the process. I don't know. You may save money, substituting these tests, but I'd rather not.
Jim, when they, when they were over drilling, did you, were you aware of that? Did you?
No, I was not aware. I just thought it was required by the bank.
Oh.
That type, none of us knew.
Okay.
I don't know how it's typically handled, and Dave might have a little more experience.
I, I mean, if the situation is not a normal situation, you know, where tanks are there, the, I want to back up a minute and just say, you know, my, my role in this, since Olander was excluded from the actual listing contract, and there was a reduction from 5% down to 2%, I became a facilitator in the role and not, and still representing the county, but I'm facilitating the process, and they need to take this 3% reduction and just assist throughout the process. So, you know, with that stated, no, I have not had a, a sale. I don't know that anybody really wants into one of the tanks in the ground, and, you know, what they do here or there. Bremer Bank was the one that actually, you know, requested that the phase one, the phase two be done because of the tanks. And, you know, that's what they're stating. They did drill outside of the tank area where it was noted. They did drill outside of the tank area where there was noted, um, potential spills. It had been legally, you know, taken care of by the county in the past. They were noted, they were documented and then paved over, you know, the proper way to block doing it. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm torn myself, you know, where we're at, uh, yes, it's the county's responsibility, we need to banks to make sure that this site was clean. I think that's pretty clear to all of us. But there was nothing documented upfront about, well, we have to do a phase one or a phase two. That was not an anticipation agreement. The, the actual cost of it, just so you know, on record, was actually eighty-three fifty and Bremer Bank, for whatever reason, agreed to swallow a thousand dollars on it. So it was, it was eighty-three fifty, not seventy-three fifty, I just gained that knowledge late yesterday afternoon. So I, you know, it, it is up to the board, your interpretation of how it was spelled out in the contract to, you know, basically pass on a clean side.
I would assume it's, it's kind of, um, the bank wants some assurances before they move forward, even though we gave them assurances that we'd have it cleaned up. I imagine it's a bigger, I mean, their worries are, are the buildings, I mean, they're, they're, what we're guaranteeing is, you would think would be enough, but they wanted some prelim, I suppose some preliminary satisfaction that it's gonna be a good property.
And number one, now, I mean, that's a party. Help them now. Take care. And. Actually. Uh, that one. That's for X amount of hours. It gets taken care of, you know, however handled, but money was spent and forward with the project.
I think too that with, with you, I mean, with your limited role in this, with the, with an excluded seller, um, I don't know if it had anything to do with it, but you shouldn't be obligated to carry them through the process where you might have been more, you know.
How I handle it.
But, you know, yeah.
My, my loyalty is still to the county. Have a contract where I listed. That, you know, that's where my loyalty at.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, with that, you know, it was a significant cost savings, I mean, it was, but, um, I think they should have had contact with, with the, with us or, or the Realtor prior to thinking we're gonna have any expense.
Yeah, thank you.
John, you're the other member of the Highway Committee.
Well, when we remove the tanks, we're gonna have testing expense with that. You know, in the past, tank removals over there have been involved with the MPCA. We gotta do a lot of testing underneath the tank, around it and probably where the lines are or from them. So there's gonna be a lot of difficult testing and I thought that we're taking care of the issues, but.
If something the bank required, I, I don't see how it's the county's responsibility.
Well, no, they usually test that when they take the tanks out. You know, that's what they're gonna do all that then, so why you do it beforehand, I don't know, especially at that cost. I mean, when you've got everything exposed and you can just test everything rather than drilling, it doesn't make any sense to drill ahead of time, but.
That's why I asked if, you know, is it, would it be a potential savings for us? You know, or it gives us some security anyway, knowing that there's, there is, it is a good site that we should be able to get out of there pretty easily when, when we do get out of there, but it's a tough call, I don't know, I don't know if I wanna split it or.
Well, as my suggestion, if I had some ones that I'd be comfortable with is splitting, you know, with, with Olander.
And the bank and, you know, they require it, they're gonna make, they're gonna make a lot of money on this long-term investment for.
I'd say we can build a Realtor, but not at his range.
Guys, if we go back to the, uh, whole amount, I'll gladly pay.
Yeah, you might. Well, that's, you know, there's another, that was my point too, is like, we did have significant cost savings and, and I don't think your treatment of us was any different, but maybe if they wouldn't have been excluded, they would have worked with you, you know, maybe they'd have brought it to the attention of you prior to.
It would have been.
Yes, that's what I'm kinda inferring, that there would have been a better, a closer relationship there probably ongoing. So we excluded him, this might be a cost to us.
Oh, what's the wishes of the board?
I can, I can live with splitting it at this time. Fifty-fifty.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Barry?
Yeah. Of the, of the seventy-two fifty, was it?
Seventy-three fifty.
Seventy-three fifty, splitting it to seventy-two fifty.
All right, I have a motion by Barry, second by Johnny, any other discussion?
Chair, I was just gonna just remind the board, we'll have, um, we extended that, um, closing to the twenty-first, it, it to as late as the twenty-first, um, we would have to do another extension if necessary. Um, we've got a couple deliverables that we're still working on with ready to affidavit of publication, so my goal would still be to close this week if the purchaser were, you know, would agree to, to these terms and hopefully we can get that done here this week.
Right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Mary? Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, um, this morning I'm requesting a motion to approve regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Um, the only other item I have is a tobacco license renewal for Big Elbow Lake Lodging Campground, Tony Beckman, Round Lake Township.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ben. Second by John. Any discussions?
Okay.
Somebody's online. Someone's online on the phone outside.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Oh, and Chair, could we go back, we had, I still had a couple items, all County Administrator, um, with regards to ARPA. Um, we're gonna bring that up there again, thank you Shane, and, and, um, so I won't go through the whole list, although we'll put it up on the screen. I really wanted to hit some items that we had talked about, um, at the previous board meeting, um, and just revisit them. Um, I think the first item, Lisa, you wanna come up? Um, I wanna just talk a little bit about the digitizing records as, as the board realizes you approved the, the, um, digitizer for the county recorder's office. I had a little bit more of a discussion with Lisa and also with, um, uh, with Denise. Um, the human services one is interesting because, you know, and I think it was alluded to by the board, we did approve, um, I think it was a hundred thousand for new software and equipment relating to scanning human services documents. And moving forward, um, human services is digitizing everything, but there's a block of, of historical information that has to be digitized. Um, we think that will be a challenge to, to look outside with other companies because of the proprietary nature of the files and things like that. So we definitely think the, the investment that the board made in, in, um, having staff do it internally is the way to do it. The challenge is, is having existing staff do the work, they're very busy with their own responsibilities, so our, our thinking is, is perhaps we would bring people in on a temporary basis, seasonal, uh, to be able to do that historical work, cuz the equipment is there, the software is there, uh, the files are in the building. But we wanted to get some feedback from the board, if that approach should be something the board would support before we started looking at, um, a recommendation to bring to the board. And again, we're thinking temporary, um, positions, maybe seasonal positions, but certainly a lot of counties have done it that way and I'm just curious to get some feedback from the board.
What is our timeline, do we have any idea? How long it will take to do this? How are you gonna get estimated cost if you don't?
Well, it's something we're working on, but we wanted to start with is the concept of the idea of using staff, uh, the way to go, yeah.
I think your committee can look at it and review it and bring it to the board.
Okay, excellent, thank you for that, and then, uh, I'm sorry.
Committee first.
Yeah. And, and then the, the other item, uh, we wanted to, to revisit the, um, the, um, the scanning project for, uh, planning and zoning and the assessor's office. You know, we, um, we did speak with the vendor, they indicated that they'll still honor the same quote. Again, we did separate quotes and did combined quotes. Um, you know, we, we wanted to revisit to see if there was a, another project with human services. We do see those as separate and we're interested in knowing if the board, um, at this time would wanna support that scanning project for planning and zoning, uh, and, uh, in the, um, assessor's office and, or could we answer any other questions that you might have?
Any questions, any comments? I think we should move forward and get it done.
I kinda agree, we've discussed it quite a bit in finance and don't like the total cost, but I think it's a necessary deal to get it done.
Do you wanna act on these projects?
I want somebody to make a need to make a motion.
I think Commissioner Nelson brought up a good point last time. We have, we have no information on how the public will be able to assess it, it's just, you know, kind of a data dump. And I don't see how that's, you know, in, in the recorder's office, we know that we have a system to index the files and stuff, but I don't see why the taxpayers would want to have one big mega file where they couldn't necessarily search for keywords or index files.
This would be indexed and searchable by parcel number and year. And we currently have that already, all the way back to nineteen ninety-seven, so it would just be adding all the rest of it in there.
And then is the quote, there's nothing in front of us, what are you gonna move forward with?
Well, we had, we had reviewed it at a previous meeting, the, the, uh, the, the quote was the same that was reviewed, was it a month ago that we brought this to the board? Um, essentially it was, uh, we subtracted out, it's two twenty-seven, four four two, and that's subtracting out the, uh, county recorder portion. Again, we did these as a group, but then did them in sections, they all added up to the same, so uh, we could certainly bring the quote back to you, but it was brought to the board in a, in a previous meeting.
So let, let me understand this, so if you put in a parcel number, you would get all the information for that parcel?
Yep, and then it would be, it's broken down by year on top of that, so if you're looking for nineteen ninety-eight, you enter your parcel number and then pick your year.
All right, sounds pretty easy.
And we have it currently in-house, it's not public, but staff can all search it that way, all the way back to ninety-seven. So then, this stuff getting scanned would be from ninety-seven to the beginning of when our book started, so I think nineteen hundred.
Well, right now, they spend a lot of time looking for files up there, when anybody calls, that's what they do. And if that would save, that, that would save us some, some time in that office from going and get that file and lost files because files get misplaced and so.
And then I guess it would be up to you guys if you'd wanna make it public out on the, the county's website or not.
All right. What's the other board, you wanna do?
Make a motion, move forward, scanning.
Motion by John.
Second.
By Richard.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I don't, I, I just don't know how you can act on something that's not on the agenda and it's a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar budget, I might, wasn't even brought, wasn't even in the finance, so. I don't know how you, how you public, spend public money with, with that.
Well, we've had, we've had the discussion, we know what the cost is with Sinarpa project, we've had this discussion over and over again. You wanna wait till the next meeting and bring it forward? Fine, but I'm gonna call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, and since Lisa, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Roll call, Mary?
Name.
And next.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, and since Lisa was still here, I wanna just mention another one that was on the, uh, was on the, uh, uh, ARPA list, that was the pictometry project, that's something that's also been discussed before. Um, you can give an update on it, but we're under contract to do continued flyovers and maybe give the board an update and what the status is on costs of that project.
Yep, sure, so when we signed that initial, uh, contract, it was for six years for two flyovers. So coming this June is when we would have to give approval if we were gonna do that second flyover so that they can schedule it for the spring of twenty twenty-four. And the cost would be about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for that second flyover.
You know, we got one sixty-two, one twenty, is that seem right?
Yep, and then the software would put it at one sixty-four, three seventy, which may be a little less because we already have it, just a re-fee.
You know, I understand the flyover was scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Would be spring twenty twenty-four.
Yep, correct, and it's under contract, so we just wanna, I mean, it's, it's nothing that, that the board would like to take action, fine, but we wanted to remind the board that, uh, that's something we're under contract for and that we would have to budget for in some fashion.
Okay, anything else?
Yep.
And the only other items I just wanted to review that was part of ARPA was the, the, we had reviewed a number of items with the sheriff's office and I think the sheriff's back there, yep, you wanna come up Sheriff, um, and, uh,
Excuse me, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Lisa, might as well do your abatement.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, good idea, that's efficient, yeah.
Sure, just have one abatement, looking for approval on, it's a duplicate personal property parcel that we came across.
Okay.
So move.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, this had gone through the sheriff's committee and, and, uh, and reviewed at finance as well at, at previous times, that there is a few items, um, that the sheriff had listed. Um, and I'll just give you a summary of drones, uh, four drones, uh, for the, each sergeant's vehicle. Um, EM trailer, um, a, a K-VAC, uh, twelve fifty cleaning machine, um, a, a more complex drone for the centralized, uh, office and then SWAT equipment and then portable radios. Um, those were the ones that we identified for consideration. There were some larger ticket items like, uh, uh, again, the command post, the info lot. Again, we have on the matrix what we filled, there's need to be more, more work being done and we have received, uh, quotes, uh, from the sheriff and did you wanna talk about any of those projects here?
Uh, the, I guess, I don't have the quotes in front of me. Um, if there's any questions, I can answer them. Um, the, the EM trailer, that is something that, uh, like I talked about at the last meeting where we, we could have used that, that, the Maple Log fire. Definitely could have used that, so. Uh, the drones, uh, be, we have, the, the sergeants are, um, the sergeants are trained in the, uh, drone flight and it'd be, we'd like to have one in each of their squads in case of a, a missing person or, um, whatever scene that we're at, we can immediately get something in there. Uh, radios have already been paid for, we just like to have a reimbursement for that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion that you get the paperwork together and get it in the next packet because we don't wanna go through another instance here, so let's just do it that way.
Yeah, so we, so we'll put it on with the quotes on for the December thirteenth meeting, is that?
Or, or the twenty-ninth, if the board.
Twenty, if, if the board decides there's gonna be a board meeting, okay. I wanna make sure the sheriff was able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the sheriff?
One question, that cleaning machine, I thought we had pretty much a goal to go ahead and purchase that for that jail.
Like, I was told to wait till after this meeting.
Yeah, well, we could break, we can have that discussion, why don't you go into in-depth on the cleaning machine, that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, uh, so recently we've had, uh, some uh, cases where there's been messes made that the, uh, the staff has been, uh, they've been able to clean it, but, uh, probably can't go into real detail on what, what they're cleaning, but, uh, it's, uh, some of it's human, uh, excrement and we'd like something to, uh, do a deep cleaning on those areas where that's, where that's happened, cells holding areas. So that's why we're asking for that cleaning machine.
I, I'm, like John, I thought we had approved that, um, but it is over three thousand dollars.
Yes.
To come to the board, it's forty.
Four thousand.
Four thousand three, yeah, and it did go through the sheriff committee and that's, yep.
And finance.
Chair, I think Chris, uh, out there, Dale has researched it and thought this one would really.
Yeah, it was just, um, really the final decision was whether we'd pay it out of funds or out of budget, you know, and we thought it was a good ARPA fund thing, so I'll entertain the wishes of the board. And we thought it was a good ARPA fund thing. So I'll entertain the wishes of the board. If somebody has a motion, we'd like them.
Make a motion to approve purchasing that scrubber.
Motion by John.
Second jail.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Okay. Picture. How did you, did you check your schedule at all?
I sent you an email.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, and just the final item I had, uh, chair was, uh, November twenty ninth. Do we want to make that a, a board meeting? A special board meeting or, or finance?
Ben, you good?
What is the schedule for the month of December then?
Then we would have, uh, we would have a December thirteenth, uh, regular board meeting, a December fifteenth TNT hearing, and then a December twentieth, uh, final board meeting to certify the budget. And, and that was due to the AMC conference being the first week of December.
It would be similar to the end of year finance claims.
Yep.
So just, if you're just paying the bills, I'm fine with finance. If there's anything else, I'm not fine with finance.
Okay. Is that fine?
Sure. Well, the finance committee, um, you know, would review bills. That was the, one of the important things.
Yep.
I guess the question would be is, uh, you know, and this, this is sort of my final question. We have two departments that we still would like to, uh, have board review of on budgets, although they've gone through all the committees. And because they're both indicating their request to bring in additional personnel, and that's the audit treasures office. They're currently doing a time study, uh, which they'll be bringing data that we planned on reviewing on the twenty ninth. Um, but we can review on the thirteenth if necessary, and then also the attorney's office. Um, they also are, um, there's been a request for some preliminary data as well relating to adding assistant to county attorney there. So again, we can review, we can hold off and just do the twenty ninth as bills and the thirteenth can review that data. That's what the board's looking for.
Mr. Chair, well, I just wanted to say I had asked you, you know, about a budget review. Because when we set the maximum levy, we just did a percentage. We didn't actually settle any department budgets fully. So if you guys want to do that, then we wouldn't have to do it at the board on the thirteenth. You know, because of the election, I'm fine with it either way, but I'll be happy to help out, you know?
We can post the finance meeting as a finance meeting and, and anybody that wants to attend certainly can.
Do you guys want to do a last budget review or do you want to do it during a regular board meeting?
Well, if we do it, I'd like it done at the regular board meeting because I don't necessarily need to come to finance meeting to do claims. But.
My thoughts, no.
That's fine then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Is that it then?
That's it.
Okay. Denise?
Good morning, everyone. The first item, um, happens to be claims this time.
Move to approve the claims for human services, public health and transit.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
The second item is a personnel request for a part-time office support specialist due to a retirement.
Mr. Chair, I'm just looking for a resolution on that.
Eleven twenty two, two B.
Moved.
Motion by Ben, second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Item number three, we'd actually like to hold off on. We'd have some more steps that we're processing through with DHS prior to bringing it to board. So I apologize for the, okay?
I'll move the Medica SNBC case management participation agreement.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Barry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
And the UKR amendment to volunteer driver provider participation agreement, which increases our rates here.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Barry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, motion carried.
Did you finance recommend the approval?
Yep.
I'll move the, uh, pledge to the.
Dental access.
Yeah, dental access clinic group from public health for $40,000.
Motion by Ben, second by Barry.
Yep.
Any discussion? That was money that was a donation from, uh,
The private donor, correct.
All right. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Lastly, we have a McBeef fund purchase in the amount of $14,700, um, for gift cards to Central Market.
Moved.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human resources.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I'll make it quick. Um, just an update for the board. My, our department as well as payroll has been doing ongoing meetings, implementing the UKG program across the board for payroll and human resources with the target date of implementing that by April. So that'll be ongoing. Um, as we are, Amanda and myself are monitoring open positions, uh, through hu- human resources. We are, uh, trying to communicate openly with the department heads, uh, monitoring the time allowed for physicians to be out there and, um, trying to update job descriptions, um, as they are being posted to try to, uh, speed up that process so that we're not sitting out there with open positions. And that continues to assist them with, um, uh, lessening the amount of open positions that we have out there that are posted. Um, leadership training, um, I did present this to the finance committee, but I will bring it back before the next board because it wasn't included in your packet. I did not have the final cost. I had talked about this on the last board meeting, um, utilizing or, at that point I was talking about utilizing our EAP program and a trainer from there. Um, and there were some suggestions to look, you know, more locally, more cost effective. And now I've done that. So I will be bringing that back, uh, before the board as well. I was able to get, um, some, uh, meet with the, the college here and they had some, um, some training that I think would be beneficial for the, um, for the supervisors as well as the department heads. That again, uh, with the cost, I'll be bringing that, uh, forth the next board meeting.
You mentioned, you had mentioned that the trainer, you had checked that the trainer has like 20 years of experience and very good.
Yes, I had met with, um, you know the name better than I do. I know the last.
GL.
Yeah, thank you. I can't remember the initials. I can't remember the last name.
Um, yes, the trainer that, um, they are suggesting, which I will then go forth with, uh, prior to the next board meeting, and I'll have a meeting with her. Um, she has, uh, 20 years of experience, training leaders in, uh, government entities. So.
GL Tucker?
Not, no, not him. It was somebody on the staff from beforehand. Yeah. No, I, he's the one that I originally made contact with. Um, so I was excited that we had, we would be able to utilize somebody with, uh, many years of experience and that has, you know, experience specifically in, in government entities for training. Um, the last, I guess, um, uh, we had closing of our open enrollment period, you know, yesterday. Um, we have some outstanding, uh, things and, and maybe people that missed deadlines that we're reaching out to, um, auditing to make sure that things are accurate. Um, so the closing was yesterday. Um, and we also have some contacts with some of those that have Cobra, you know, are continuing their insurance due to retirement or have left employment. So, uh, we're on the uptick of that. Hopefully we'll be able to close that, uh, conclude that probably, uh, with accuracy, uh, shortly. Um, lastly, I just, it was probably more for, um, some guidance from, from this council. Um, I am doing some rewrites of, uh, the policy, uh, the personnel policy. Um, some of it is, uh, rewrites of language. Some of them are new policies. I guess for me it's clear, bringing new policies before this board for approval. But I am just wondering if there's a preference as I'm rewriting. I, I mean, I don't expect that I would bring the whole policy manual to you and ask you to read it all in one sitting. So my thoughts were perhaps to do in sections and then put it before the board for review. I don't know if you have a preference.
Well, I won't be here. So those that are, speak up.
No, I think, uh, by sections, I'm a little smaller. We can look at.
Okay. That was my thought too, especially with some of those where, um, again, I had shared with the finance committee, just an example, you know? Um, uh, putting in a mission statement for the human resources as the start of the personnel policy and then some, um, probably more fine tuning of the writing and, and updating the writing. And I think those are probably easier by sections. But obviously if there's new policies coming before the board, I would do those independently, uh, of the rewrites. If that's okay with all of you. Okay. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Morning again. I just have one item.
Should have caught you when you were up. Sorry.
What's that?
Should have caught you when you were up.
Sorry. Uh, I, we'd like approval to sell a forfeited vehicle.
Move to approve.
Motion by John, second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Where's Mr. Scoog?
Yeah, I know he's online. So, uh,
He's online?
Well, he's, we saw him online here. So, meaning he's upstairs in his office.
Okay.
So he knows to come down, but, um, we could, I guess, move on to the next one. I'll communicate with him to stop down.
Little head is scared though, man.
Hmm?
Our little head is scared though.
Yeah. Well, we can't go to planning and zoning. We'll have to wait.
Take a break for me?
Yeah, we're going to the bathroom.
You need a break? Go ahead. Take a break. Thanks if you're weak, kidney. Go ahead.
Basically, we've got in front of us the 2023 proposed solid waste fee schedule, it's resolution 11222A. We did increase some of the, some of the fees to reflect actual operational costs. The compacted garbage fees we left alone, which is the main driver of most of our revenue. Anticipate this will raise probably in the neighborhood of 200 to 225,000. We're going to be using this money to reflect, offset some of our labor costs, operational costs, also revenue. Revenues from recycling is going to be down, I would anticipate for the rest of 2022 and into 23, who knows how far. So that'll be used to offset some of those costs, and then also, on this schedule, we put a caveat in on our dumpster recycling fees. We talked about it in committee, and maybe even at the board level, to where if we have a service fee to collect recyclables, if the market value of those commodities really drops a lot, we could add a market adjustment to that to reflect some of those additional costs. Not additional cost, but loss of revenue to offset some of our operational costs. We haven't fleshed that out in committee yet, but that would be one of the things that we could do in 2023.
You're leaving, you're leaving it open.
I'm leaving it open.
At this point, right, right.
Good question, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Based on the 21 or 22's dumping rates, how much additional revenue would this give your department?
This will raise probably about 200 to 230,000 total.
And what do you think you'll lose in recycling?
Well, that's, that is such a hard question, because we're going into an election year. And, I mean, those, those markets are really volatile. Earlier this year, we were, for cardboard, I believe, we're 100 and over $100 a ton, and now it's maybe 10. It just, the bottom dropped out. And they, in talking to some of the brokers or the buyers, it sounds like things aren't going to turn around. Maybe starting in the first quarter, they might start to come back in the spring. So we don't have a market for, we could sell plastic right now, that's another one. But their advice is just to hold it through the winter.
200 to 230,000, what percentage of an increase is that roughly in tipping fees?
Hmm. Believe we, offhand, I believe we raised right around 6 million total as a budget, I'd have to go back in.
Just for tipping fees?
Uh, no.
Off of the solid waste fee schedule?
No, it's probably about four, maybe, is total.
Four million in tipping fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not, we're not, it's not a big percentage.
Cool, on, on, you know, if you look at some of these line items, it is.
It is.
Potential increase.
It, it is.
10 to 20%.
Yes, in, in the areas that we saw a lot of increase were tires, our tire disposal fees. That's passed on to us, basically as a pass-through, that's what's happened in last year, that our disposal costs have just went up a lot, and that's reflected.
It's outsourced, we have no control over that.
No, you don't.
Okay, oh, that's all I had.
Okay. Pushing the bar. Have a resolution 11222A.
I make a motion to move resolution.
11222A.
Yeah, 11222A.
Motion by Richard.
Sorry.
Second by John, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we still got some time, planning and zoning doesn't start till 9:50. Nice haircut there, Jerry.
That's my last one for the year, next year.
Well, yeah, that's, won't need another one for sure for the year. Did you see any deer?
Pardon?
Did you get any deer?
Oh, we did not get any deer, Billy, Billy saw, got glances at about, I don't know, two or three, maybe.
He hunted here, not in cast?
I, I did not see a deer.
I didn't either, it was brutal up there.
They create tracks, and I don't know what they are, I think they were gray.
Well, they were spotted off of our stands on our property.
You saw some too?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I didn't see one, my cousin saw two. And then my nephew, who was, well, it was, I guess, my great nephew's first time hunting, saw two coyotes. And the day before, my aunt saw a bobcat about 40 yards away from her, not scared at all.
And, and I talked to a lot of people, and there were, like, there are a lot of camps that didn't see any deer. But I talked to Carol Schercher yesterday, and they shot the heck out of them, especially on that windy day.
Really? Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
I think they put up some no wolf sign.
That, that was probably, you know, in hindsight, that was probably the right thing to do.
I think so.
Or you could count the shots on one hand, you know, for a whole day.
Well, I, I, typically, I count to noon, I count 100 shots, kind of roughly in there. Last year, I got 50 all day, this year, it was starting to get kind of really dark, and I was 28 shots all day long.
Jerry, have you checked your hearing lately?
He heard a lot. No, it's because we hunt up in the jungle, and it's a little different up there.
Yeah, that's not the same as down here. You go for a ways and not see a deer track.
Yeah.
Down here.
No, there.
Cutting all your trees up. Yah. There's still coffee over there, you guys want coffee? There's coffee over there, I think.
I've been trying to sell it, these guys.
They're not coffee drinkers?
Did Tom hunt too? Jerry, did Tom get out and hunt too?
Yeah, Tommy, he's been a lot of times. Those two knuckleheads were all in the rain, and they're out in that blowy scary wind.
You know what, that day on, I think that was Sunday, I watched two trees blow down.
I don't see them.
And one of them was when I was walking out, and I thought, well, I better keep my eyes up instead of looking out for deer here, I'm going to have a tree top fall on me.
My question is, you got that snowmobile ready to go?
Yeah, I better do that. I put the charger on.
You had your B A R. My gun didn't shoot when I went to shoot.
Are you kidding me?
No, it didn't shoot, first time ever.
What was it?
Check the market yet this morning?
Yeah, it was a bit fire, it must have been some moisture in the mold or in the pin.
My phone plugged in at home. Check on here.
I was up 3M. But I wasn't shooting, I was trying to kill a cut.
That was been doing pretty well.
That's happened, I just, you hooked with a B A R. He just balled it, I said I should have had it.
So I've been, so I never had one of those.
Why are you recess here? Would it be okay to just mention the Isaac Walden League, holding the meeting on?
Yeah, go ahead, make, make a public service and out with Willis. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the Isaac Walden League chapter is sponsoring a meeting, information meeting on confined animal feeding operators. And in some neighboring towns, this will be on November 20th, at 7 o'clock at Public Library. This is the live meeting from a citizen perspective and citizen experience, and citizen involvement in this whole development of rural agriculture. We will have speakers, an attorney from Dodge County, whose family experienced the development of seven confined animal feedlots within five miles of their home in Dodge County. And their experience of what happened, what they were worried about, and what has actually happened, and what they suggest other citizens do. So that's going to be the principal source of information, we'll also be talking about the permitting process. The Clean Water Act, N P D S permit that the state issues for these facilities, and why they don't necessarily control problems that citizens are experiencing. So that's the, in the topic for that meeting at 7 o'clock at Public Library, and 21st coming voters invited to attend and staff. But this will be helpful as you move forward for consideration of your more authority, and how you're going to deal with the feedlots. By the way, you should know that Long Island County is experiencing an onslaught of these in Gary. The real new Gary corporation has an existing 10,500, 10,000 feedlot there near Gary Minnesota. And now a new feedlot twice that size, 21,000 Gary is coming in and proposed there, and they're having to deal with that. You know, all the consequences of that rapid development. The, the feedlot development is the equivalent of a city of 157,000 people being dropped in the middle of Long Island County in terms of waste generation. So it's an all small item, you're seeing it here in the swamp, and it's not likely to be first. So everything you can do to learn about the consequences and what your authority is, and how you can protect, or support your folks here, and if you're on the agenda for that meeting.
Will it be zoomed? I'm sure it will be, huh?
Yes, it will also be zoomed, it has the flyer, so the link there, if anyone wants to attend, you cannot come.
Think you sent that out to us?
You know, over leading off kind of thing, by, you can attend the meeting, and even ask questions online, so you're invited to attend.
Thank you, thank you.
We did all get emails from the ICS. Pardon? We got, all the commissioners got emails from the ICS.
Okay, so you have the link there in that email that you got, yeah?
You can say, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I can't imagine, I've never heard that happening.
A misfire?
Well, yeah, where you pull the trigger and nothing happens.
That's a misfire.
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, me neither, that's the craziest thing I've ever, you can be able to drag those things behind a car and pick it up.
Well, usually, yeah, but you know, I bought one at the auction out here at the Holiday Inn, and I just held it up to the light when I got home, and I couldn't see through it, and I'm like. So I rammed a cleaning rod through it, and I had to ram it through it, full of those Asian beetles.
Oh my, they would have fired that up.
If you'd have put a, if you'd have put a rod in there, you'd have.
Blow it up the barrel.
Yeah, and man, they rusted it out right there, and I'm just like, ooh. Yeah, it was a Browning B A R. Yeah, well, I'm getting cleaned out, but.
A good rifle.
Huh?
They ruined a good rifle.
Yeah, well, it'll probably be all right. It's funny, I've never had one of those, so this is, I ordered, I bought that one, now I bought another one. But if you grab that compared to a bolt action, it probably is heavy.
Heavy?
But maybe it's got to be if you're going to just sit and pull the trigger. We had Tannerate, you guys ever shoot Tannerate?
A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, well, you don't want to do it with 30 on sex.
Why do you shoot it?
To blow it up, why do you blow it up?
Why do you have pyro?
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, that ain't a big deal, but they weren't hitting it, and so, but it's a jar this big, you know?
Depends on which one you get, we got bigger ones.
Oh, yeah, well, then you can, they're maybe a little easier to hit, but jeez, I shot at it twice and my arm hurt so bad.
Is that a B A R?
No, just a regular bolt, bolt action, but I mean, I didn't want to shoot again, they're like, I'll try it again, I'm like, no. But that's the difference between shooting at a deer and.
Yeah.
You don't care.
Right.
You hear your heart pounding.
Ever show you that video of that young man shooting his first deer? I got to show that to you, this is so powerful. You're leaving, you're leaving it open.
I'm leaving it open.
At this point, right, right.
Good question, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Based on the 21 or 22's dumping rates, how much additional revenue would this give your department?
This will raise probably about 200 to 230,000 total.
And what do you think you'll lose in recycling?
Well, that's, that is such a hard question, because we're going into an election year. And, I mean, those, those markets are really volatile, earlier this year, we were, for cardboard, I believe, we're 100 and over $100 a ton, and now it's maybe 10. It just, the bottom dropped out. And they, in talking to some of the brokers or the buyers, it sounds like things aren't going to turn around. Maybe starting in the first quarter, they might start to come back in the spring, so we don't have a market for, we could sell plastic right now, that's another one. But their advice is just to hold it through the winter.
200 to 230,000, what percentage of an increase is that roughly in tipping fees?
Hmm, I believe we, offhand, I believe we raised right around 6 million total as a budget, I'd have to go back in.
Just for tipping fees?
Uh, no.
Off of the solid waste fee schedule?
No, it's probably about four, maybe, is total.
Four million in tipping fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not, we're not, it's not a big percentage.
Cool, on, on, you know, if you look at some of these line items, it is.
It is.
Potential increase.
It, it is.
10 to 20%.
Yes, in, in the areas that we saw a lot of increase were tires, our tire disposal fees, that's passed on to us, basically as a pass-through. That's what's happened in last year, that our disposal costs have just went up a lot, and that's reflected.
It's outsourced, we have no control over that.
No, you don't.
Okay, oh, that's all I had.
Okay. Pushing the bar. Have a resolution 11222A.
I make a motion to move resolution.
11222A.
Yeah, 11222A.
Motion by Richard.
Sorry.
Second by John, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we still got some time, planning and zoning doesn't start till 9:50. Nice haircut there, Jerry.
That's, that's my last one for the year, next year.
Well, yeah, that's, won't need another one for sure for the year. Did you see any deer?
Pardon?
Did you get any deer?
Oh, we did not get any deer, Billy, Billy saw, got glances at about, I don't know, two or three, maybe.
He hunted here, not in cast?
I, I did not see a deer.
I didn't either, it was brutal up there.
Track, and I don't know what they are, I think they were gray.
Well, they were spotted off of our stands on our property.
You saw some too?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I didn't see one, my cousin saw two, and then my nephew, who was, well, it was, I guess, my great nephew's first time hunting, saw two coyotes. And the day before, my aunt saw a bobcat about 40 yards away from her, not scared at all.
And, and I talked to a lot of people, and there were, like, there are a lot of camps that didn't see any deer. But I talked to Carol Schercher yesterday, and they shot the heck out of them, especially on that windy day.
Really? Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
I think they put up some no wolf sign.
That, that was probably, you know, in hindsight, that was probably the right thing to do.
I think so.
Or you could count the shots on one hand, you know, for a whole day.
Well, I, I, typically, I count to noon, I count 100 shots, kind of roughly in there. Last year, I got 50 all day, this year, it was starting to get kind of really dark, and I was 28 shots all day long.
Jerry, have you checked your hearing lately?
He heard a lot. No, it's because we hunt up in the jungle, and it's a little different up there.
Yeah, that's not the same as down here. You go for a ways and not see a deer track.
Yeah.
Down here.
No, there.
Cutting all your trees up. Yah. There's still coffee over there, you guys want coffee? There's coffee over there, I think.
I've been trying to sell it, these guys.
They're not coffee drinkers?
Did Tom hunt too? Jerry, did Tom get out and hunt too?
Yeah, Tommy, he's been a lot of times. Those two knuckleheads were all in the rain, and they're out in that blowy scary wind.
You know what, that day on, I think that was Sunday, I watched two trees blow down.
I don't see them.
And one of them was when I was walking out, and I thought, well, I better keep my eyes up instead of looking out for deer here, I'm going to have a tree top fall on me.
My question is, you got that snowmobile ready to go?
Yeah, I better do that. I put the charger on.
You had your B A R. My gun didn't shoot when I went to shoot.
Are you kidding me?
It didn't shoot, first time ever.
What was it?
Check the market yet this morning?
Yeah, it was a bit fire, it must have been some moisture in the mold or in the pin.
My phone plugged in at home, check on here.
I was up 3M. But I wasn't shooting, I was trying to kill a cut.
That was been doing pretty well.
That's happened, I just, you hooked with a B A R. He just balled it, I said I should have had it.
So I've been, so I never had one of those.
Why are you recess here? Would it be okay to just mention the Isaac Walden League, holding the meeting on?
Yeah, go ahead, make, make a public service and out with Willis. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the Isaac Walden League chapter is sponsoring a meeting, information meeting on confined animal feeding operators. And in some neighboring towns, this will be on November 20th, at 7 o'clock at Public Library. This is the live meeting from a citizen perspective and citizen experience, and citizen involvement in this whole development of rural agriculture. We will have speakers, an attorney from Dodge County, whose family experienced the development of seven confined animal feedlots within five miles of their home in Dodge County. And their experience of what happened, what they were worried about, and what has actually happened, and what they suggest other citizens do. So that's going to be the principal source of information, we'll also be talking about the permitting process. The Clean Water Act, N P D S permit that the state issues for these facilities, and why they don't necessarily control problems that citizens are experiencing. So that's the, in the topic for that meeting at 7 o'clock at Public Library, and 21st coming voters invited to attend and staff. But this will be helpful as you move forward for consideration of your more authority, and how you're going to deal with the feedlots. By the way, you should know that Long Island County is experiencing an onslaught of these in Gary. The real new Gary corporation has an existing 10,500, 10,000 feedlot there near Gary Minnesota. And now a new feedlot twice that size, 21,000 Gary is coming in and proposed there, and they're having to deal with that. You know, all the consequences of that rapid development. The, the feedlot development is the equivalent of a city of 157,000 people being dropped in the middle of Long Island County in terms of waste generation. So it's an all small item, you're seeing it here in the swamp, and it's not likely to be first. So everything you can do to learn about the consequences and what your authority is, and how you can protect, or support your folks here, and if you're on the agenda for that meeting.
Will it be zoomed? I'm sure it will be, huh?
Yes, it will also be zoomed, it has the flyer, so the link there, if anyone wants to attend, you cannot come.
Think you sent that out to us?
You know, over leading off kind of thing, by, you can attend the library, and even ask questions online, so you're invited to attend.
Thank you, thank you.
We did all get emails from the ICS.
Pardon?
We got, all the commissioners got emails from the ICS.
Okay, so you have the link there in that email that you got, yeah?
You can say, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I can't imagine, I've never heard that happening.
A misfire?
Well, yeah, where you pull the trigger and nothing happens.
That's a misfire.
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, me neither, that's the craziest thing I've ever, you can be able to drag those things behind a car and pick it up.
Well, usually, yeah, but you know, I bought one at the auction out here at the Holiday Inn, and I just held it up to the light when I got home, and I couldn't see through it, and I'm like. So I rammed a cleaning rod through it, and I had to ram it through it, full of those Asian beetles.
Oh my, they would have fired that up.
If you'd have put a, if you'd have put a rod in there, you'd have.
Blow it up the barrel.
Yeah, and man, they rusted it out right there, and I'm just like, ooh. Yeah, it was a Browning B A R.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm getting cleaned out, but.
A good rifle.
Huh?
They ruined a good rifle.
Yeah, well, it'll probably be all right. It's funny, I've never had one of those, so this is, I ordered, I bought that one, now I bought another one. But if you grab that compared to a bolt action, it probably is heavy.
Heavy?
But maybe it's got to be if you're going to just sit and pull the trigger. We had Tannerate, you guys ever shoot Tannerate?
A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, well, you don't want to do it with 30 on sex.
Why do you shoot it?
To blow it up, why do you blow it up?
Why do you have pyro?
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, that ain't a big deal, but they weren't hitting it, and so, but it's a jar this big, you know?
Depends on which one you get, we got bigger ones.
Oh, yeah, well, then you can, they're maybe a little easier to hit, but jeez, I shot at it twice and my arm hurts so bad.
Is that B A R?
No, just a regular bolt, bolt action, but I mean, I didn't want to shoot again, they're like, I'll try it again, I'm like, no. But that's the difference between shooting at a deer and.
Yeah.
You don't care.
Right.
You hear your heart pounding.
Ever show you that video of that young man shooting his first deer? I got to show that to you, this is so powerful. Close enough, guys, what do you think?
It was what everybody said.
Yeah, you get to start too early.
I think we better just wait, yeah. Probably been through.
Bye, it's okay, it changed like three years.
I got a Browning automatic.
Automatic two seventy hurt my, like the old.
Yeah.
It's heavy compared to my two seventy bolt.
Well, there's a lot more to them. When I started looking at them, down, I did, when YouTube videos, pretty handy if you get a gun and want to tear it apart.
Oh, yeah.
But there is a lot more to them. And like I say, there, there probably just says, well, uh, I was looking at the military one. They're about six grand. Those are really heavy. Well, and then they had one on there for sixty-six grand also. That was fully automatic. It said transferable. I don't know who could actually afford to put ammo in it.
Hey, forgot to, I was gonna call you this.
Well, between the cost of ammo and then having to clean your gun or rifle when you're done shooting it, I hate taking a wasted shot.
I didn't know if you called it.
Yeah, well, or even, I won't even shoot them. My kids are like, did you shoot this one? I'm like, no. I'm pretty sure it's true. But now if you're talking to you, maybe I should be.
It's their season for that stuff.
Right.
Barry, Barry.
Yeah.
Barry dot E M C. How big were those, uh, two color operations going into Wilken County? They're really one.
Wilken County?
Remember, uh, what's the name reported?
Well, it was me. He was Larry.
Oh, it was you?
Yeah.
You have a minute?
That's right.
Can't remember how big. I think they thought they'd get an extra, what, seventeen thousand in Texas or something.
Yeah, but I thought they were.
Then that one fella south of there was kind of laughing and saying, well.
Fifteen, fifteen hundred, two thousand? When is a dairy operation?
You would have had a better memory for it than I am because you're in agriculture.
Yeah, I think most of.
Yeah.
Very large dairy, like fifteen hundred.
I don't know. Yeah, it was. Well, there's no people in it. That county is basically.
It's dang. You know, well, they'll have a lot of, so you gotta take up, there's a pretty good.
Yeah. Well, that other guy was a Grant Tony. Till.
He's.
He, he loved his job.
He's loud.
Very much.
He's always asking.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Okay, right on time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think, now.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Good morning. Um, have planning commi, planning commission recommendations before you today, um, from the November ninth meeting. First applicant Dana and Shirley Holland, uh, was a request for a final plat for phase one. Of a common interest community consisting of twenty-eight units to be known as Thunderbolt Ranch. Recommendation to approve as submitted.
Pushes on the board? Any questions?
I would, I'm pretty sure that the party that didn't approve of this, they did get notified. They were on the notification list on the original.
Chevving?
Yeah, the party that.
Yes, and I just wanted to clarify because their letter was part of the record.
Yeah, but they did get that original and they, when we originally went through this, correct?
They did. He did tell me they did. He did get notice of it.
Should have a list in here.
His letter did allude to the fact that there was so much land that he just had maybe assumed that it was going somewhere else. It must have.
It's a, it's a, um, it's unfortunate at this time that they didn't talk to us in the proper time. We could have maybe accommodated a couple of these minor concerns that they've pointed out, which seem reasonable. Unfortunately, at this time. Um, it's, it's, it's late in the game to be.
Um, I just want to note, I mean, I, I did go by there. Um, I believe it was last Tuesday. Um, there was a few oaks removed there, but from what it appeared to me, the majority of them were, were still there. Um, I think a couple, you know, could have been saved. I'm not gonna say they couldn't have, but majority of them are still there.
Is it, is it, is it proper to be doing the work prior to the final plat being approved? Is that normal?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I thought it was, so that's why, that's what I told them initially. I said, it's, I think it's been approved, but they said it's coming forward. Well, that, I said, there's a difference between final plat and, and preliminary, so.
Essentially is, the final is almost an automatic approval as long as they do not defer from the preliminary. A lot of times, you know, the road will be built, not a lot of times, the road will be built between the preliminary and the final and that way it can be spotted a hundred percent correctly and things like that. Same with the buildings. A lot of times you'll see the buildings up and they'll spot them and the final will come after.
Yeah, and that's when they, I talked to them and I said, you know, if, if you'd have brought these concerns in, in the, we could have adjusted some things, minor things relatively easily, so. It's unfortunate that they weren't informed or weren't.
They were informed because I know, I talked to him and he was informed. And he had a Bible study that night at the first meeting and couldn't go. So he did get a letter. He said it was vague as to what it was gonna be. He wasn't, he thought the letter could have been better, but he was informed. He did know about the meeting before it.
The, this is what he would have received on July twelfth, which is, is it Tony?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, a request for a preliminary plat for a common interest community consisting of sixty-seven units to be known as Thunderbolt Ranch Storage. That, I mean.
And the parcel number.
And the parcel number, um, Thunderbolt Ranch Road. I mean. We don't send out a copy of the drawing, but it, to me, there's, you're being noticed that there's sixty-seven storage units going in across the road from you. I think that's fair. I mean.
Okay.
Motion to concur or approve.
Motion by Barry.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Next applicant Erica and Eric Zern, uh, request an amendment to conditionally use per, permit approved. At, uh, the September sixth, twenty twenty-two County Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, for revisions to the required stipulations. Um. Motion to approve the application, um, or recommend to approve with the removal of the road agreement stipulation. But to maintain a condition that they must take care of the road during construction phase and if damaged, pay any expense to put it back to the way it was prior to construction.
Eric? Anything?
I guess Eric and Eric is earned. Obviously, um, I want my permit and, um, that was been contingent on an agreement with the Spring Creek Township. Um, that is what, and we hadn't made the progress that we liked, and so I asked it to be brought back through zoning. Zoning did, uh, have a meeting last Wednesday and approved just what Kyle talked about. In the meantime, I have gotten a road agreement from, that our attorneys, which I didn't really like using attorney, but our attorneys did come to an agreement on a, on a road agreement. And, um, I have signed it. My wife and I, we had it notarized.
We received that Friday.
We received it Friday, went out, found the one and only notary open on Veterans Day and had it notarized. So we have signed our portion of the road agreement. We are satisfied with the road agreement because I would, in, in a perfect world. If we could work it out with Spring Creek, we would rather have that than have any contention. Because I, you know, I'm part of Spring Creek too. I don't live there anymore, but I mean, I do own land there and it's, we want it, what's good for everybody. So. The best I can say is we've signed our portion of it.
We're waiting for them.
Mr. Chair.
And, and we're waiting for them. And I would, if you want to look at it, I don't want.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I, I mean, I, I think we have both parties in somewhat agreement.
Yep, I'll give them opportunity to.
No, but I, I think both part, I mean, both lawyers have worked this through and I think, I think.
We believe so.
I think we're at a, at a point where I, I don't know if we need to get involved. And, and the reason I'm really cautious of us getting involved at this point. Is that this morning we had, um, I don't know what your title is.
Can't remember either.
From the tribe speak, uh, on open forum. And there's a strong possibility that they, it might be contested if, if this is addressed and moved forward. If you're, this, this is part of a previous agreement. And if we don't act on the new agreement. Then, then you're, then this is gonna be fine, I think. But right now, this is a new agreement. They, they've asked a new public hearing be, if, if we want to move forward. So I think. This is the cleanness for us. I don't think, I think we have more. I, I don't think we, if we bring it forward, I think we're putting ourselves up for.
I, I agree a hundred percent. And with this situation being the way it is, I would suggest or would ask maybe that you would maybe table your application until that agreement is signed and then. Maybe withdraw your application at that point.
And, and we could do that, um, but, I mean.
We're not against doing that. We would like confirmation from the board that they're going to sign this.
I mean, if, well, if, maybe it'd be easier for you if we'd table it till the next meeting. If it's signed, we'll, we'll then pull it. I mean.
If they sign.
If you or us table it, I mean, I think it should be tabled till our next meeting, either by you or us.
Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Um, and if it's, if we get a signed agreement, then we will, then withdraw. That would be, then it doesn't, we don't worry about a new, it's not a new condition use permit. It's part of the old one and we don't have to go through.
Eric, you would have to withdraw your application.
At that, at that time. And, and I would, if we have assigned. As I said, if we could work it through, I've been committed and I've been committed to the township. I told them, if we can come up with an agreement, which it appears we have. I'm fine.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from them to make sure that they're happy with it.
I, I think they need to, you know, they'll have to act on it at their meeting. So, um, if they're law, I think they're, from, from what I've gathered, they will, they will concur with their attorney. They, they will. They will sign what their attorney, attorney recommends. I, that's my understanding. And of course, that's one individual, so if they're interested in speaking, otherwise.
We'll give them opportunity. Thank you, Eric.
So.
Anyone, anybody else want to speak to this issue?
Brian Gross, Spring Creek Township.
Van Strave, Spring Creek, uh. We haven't had our November meeting yet because of elections and. We.
If this is the agreement that they want us, that they're going forward with, he has recommended we sign it, but we have to have our November meeting to do that. So at that time.
He has in your attorney is.
Yes.
He's strongly, he's strongly recommending it to us, so.
At that time, we will.
Go with.
Go through it.
And it should, it'll be by the end of the month. We gotta.
Next board meeting.
Okay, all right.
I, I think then, I don't know if it makes a difference. If we table it to our next meeting and then the applicant withdraws it on, you know, we will either address it at our next meeting or it'll be withdrawn by the applicant for our next meet, before the next meeting.
Does it have to be withdrawn at the meeting or before?
No, no, no. What I, he can withdraw it at any time.
Yeah, he can call in.
So, but if it's a sign, if it's a signed agreement. Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
We have somebody else that maybe wants to speak to the issue? Two minutes, Willis.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Willis Matts and I'm appearing here in behalf of the Isaac Walton League. Wish to raise a procedural question and one technical question. Um, the technical question came to our attention when we read the, uh, language in the, um, planning commission's approval. With regard to water sampling, it's my understanding, and I was not able to, uh, check the board record. But it was my understanding and our recommendation to water sampling be a water sampling program. Uh, and that it would be designed to determine background condition and then impacts of going forward of this particular, uh, facility. When we read the language in the, um, planning commission approval, it says a water sample provided to Bicker County Planning and Zoning annually. That's a much narrower scope of water sampling than we understood the commission was requesting. We understood you wanted to have some information that would tell you whether there was a pollution problem going on. One sample annually will not tell you that. So we suggest that that be, um, reconsidered along with any other information that's going to come to the board for consideration that the water sampling be comprehensive enough. To inform the board, especially for this particular facility and then for your moratorium, so you have information of which to make better decisions. Going forward on new units that may come up. In this regard. The procedural one is that I had understood, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong and the people here can, and Zerns can inform me, but I had understood. That they had applied for their, uh, state federal permit, the NPDS permit that's required for a feedlot of this size. It's my understanding that they had not and that will, they'll proceed to do that. But because this unit, uh, this facility is over one thousand animal units, there's a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet, pardon?
It's nine hundred and ninety-nine animal units.
Nine hundred and ninety-nine. I believe there's still a, a mandatory environmental review in, uh, required, uh, for this facility and if so, the, um, um. The law prohibits any final action by any unit of government until that review is complete. That review would provide you and the public with additional information about the, the facility. So, um, if I, if I'm wrong about that, I'd stand to be corrected, but it's, I think the board should be aware of that requirement. If that is in fact a facility that requires mandatory review. So, any questions? The, be our recommendation that you not take a final action if, if environmental review is incomplete.
I think that's probably gonna happen because I think Eric or we're gonna table the application.
Well, I, I think with them signing, with this group signing that, that it's over. I mean, once they both sign that agreement, this has been approved.
Yeah, that may be a final action.
There is no final action from us because that's part of the original action.
You believe the final action was taken at your September meeting?
Absolutely. As soon, and if this is signed, it's been, then that action is complete.
Okay, well, if, if in fact that is true, there may be moot. But I think you, you might want to check procedurally whether that was proper if in fact environmental review was not complete. So, yeah, I, if I'm incorrect on that, I withdraw that. But if, if it didn't, was subject to environmental review, the board was actually prohibited from taking that final action. Okay?
Thank you, Willis.
All right, thanks.
I speak, that's, I can speak. You know the answer, yes.
So essentially there, you either have discretionary or mandatory environmental review, uh, which you're all aware of. But that's determined by the R G U, the regulatory government unit overseeing the application. That is determined by who's issuing, issuing the feedlot, uh, license and that is the M P C A. So they are the R G U, not us. So any discretionary or mandatory, uh, environmental review is determined by them. If that makes sense. When you go through the E Q B, um, depending on gravel mines or solar farms or whatever it has, um, sometimes the D N R is R G U, sometimes the P C A is, some, could be the E P A, sometimes it's us. In this fact, uh, because they have the feedlot license, uh, they will be the R G U. So we have no play in that.
Uh, because they have the feedlot license, uh, they will be the R G U, so we have no play in that.
Okay, anything else, Eric?
Not me, I think it's like, you know, the date that they're gonna stop there, meeting for.
I think they, they follow their public.
Just, eyes them of your next date, maybe be helpful.
Our next commissioner meeting?
Yeah.
December thirteenth?
If it's not, if. I'll make a motion to table the application until December thirteenth meeting.
Second.
This is a, on the phone, and could I have two, two more minutes to respond, sorry, I didn't wanna interject.
No, I'm sorry, testimony's closed. I have a motion on the table, point of order. We have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay, next applicant Stein Properties requesting a conditional use permit for manufacturing of home interior and exterior items, recommendation to approve.
Motion to concur with funding of voting.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
On the last applicant against Stein Properties LLC, request to change his own from residential to commercial, uh, was tabled at the request of the applicant, uh, he owns, um. Significant amount of properties within Osage, and he was looking at changing just two of them, um, after some planning commission discussion, it sounds like he'll be changing, or asking to change more than just the two. Looking at expanding his facility and what have you, so that will be back, um, in December.
Pushes to the board?
It's tabled, so we're, I mean, I was just giving you an update on.
Oh, he tabled his, but we did pass one application, didn't we? I thought we approved the one change, but he was coming back for the other, did he table it all?
You took action on the third one, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the.
Oh, no, okay, oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, we're gonna be going into closed session.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Before you do, if you wanted to introduce, uh, David Meyer, I think everybody knows him, but, uh, he, he's here and, uh.
Wanna stand up and hit your name and?
So, so I'm David Meyer, and I am going to soon, I guess I'm Commissioner District Two elect, I guess, I'll be.
Well, I won't be here, but.
Make sure.
Welcome you aboard.
Make sure he's getting all the meeting notices.
Yeah.
Um, any special meetings until that point, and then Judy probably get him, get ready for a badge and, uh.
We, we've got a whole list of things we're gonna be communicating.
Perfect.
Are you gonna have like an orientation thing, or bring him in, or?
Well, there's an AMC orientation, but we'll, you'll be getting a, a communication from us.
Alright, sounds good.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, nice to meet you too, thank you, thank you, bud.
Come on in.
See that set, two days, uh, Commissioner one-on-one.
Right.
Yep. I hope they.
Yeah.
What do you have to require for you to?
In, in, in January?
I did? Uh, I think so, you know, when I got elected, I was able to come to, I think I came to the AMC thing.
I did.
Right away with a newly elected, so I didn't know if you guys wanted to.
Oh, yeah. You bet so?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I did go to the.
There's a lot of newly.
There's a lot of newly elected, so.
That's a good deal. Think we should do that.
Okay.
Wanna get him?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, that I don't know. Hey. I don't know about, you know, I was thinking if the committee meetings don't change too much, there may be one or two that I'd invite them. To attend before.
I have your signature.
Hmm? Oh.
Hey, Dave. Well, wanted to talk to you quick.
A little bit.
The Commissioners are in, in association of Minnesota counties, you know, where, and, uh, when I was newly elected, I went to that in December, would you have any interest in?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
That's, that's right away.
Let me tell you what the dates are.
First week in December. Yeah, that's great, and then there'd be a, call it Commissioner one-on-one training coming up, I think it's in January, it's two days in the cities, but that's very beneficial.
You should go to that.
Because it really goes over the legals, what you can do and what you can't.
It's the fifth through the seventh, so if you decide that you would go for sure, I think we'd have Peggy get you a, a phone book. Do you wanna think about it, or should we tell her?
Yeah, yeah.
What do you? Get you a.
That'd be great.
Uh, email that you want her to correspond to? Your pre-general report wasn't filed either, you might wanna. Running a little late on that. Let's do the twenty-nine. You get thirty days after the general election, but you had, you needed to have one. You, there's another person.
Yeah.
What, do you want Peggy to email you?
Yeah, so where, where?
She's not, she's up in the administrative office, stop by and talk.
I'll tell, I'll tell her. Alright, thanks, guys.
You guys want a motion to pay for him to go?
Can we still add, can we add it to the agenda?
I don't know that you'd need to.
I don't know.
You guys did two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of purchases without having it on the agenda, so. Dave, Dave, uh, are you available to go to AMC conference? He, he is gonna go.
Oh, yeah, he said he was, so.
Stop by and talk to Peggy at admin, give her your email, and she'll set you up. I'll make a motion that the county pay for Dave to go to the, uh, to the AMC and put him up in a hotel.
Okay, motion by Ben.
Second.
He's, he's one.
Second by Barry.
Yeah, you got two, yeah.
The other one, he'll be a commissioner.
Both. You want both?
Yeah, pay for both.
Offer.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Alright, we're gonna be going into closed session, uh, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section one, three, D, point zero five subdivision three, meeting may be closed to receive security briefings and reports to discuss issues related to security systems, to discuss emergency response procedures. And to discuss security deficiencies in a recommendation regarding public service, infrastructure, facilities. The disclosure of the information discussed would pose a. What?
Nothing.
Oh, pose a danger to public safety to comp, or compromise security procedures or responses, the subject is to be discussed in Becker County informational technology, infrastructure, I'll entertain a motion to close. Motion by John, second by Ben. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried.